Email this to him.
I'll be there for the.
I want to welcome everybody to the Munster Town Council regular meeting this Monday, May fifth at six thirty. Wendy, can you please?
Yes, um, councillor Hopper.
Here.
Councillor Gardner.
Present.
Councillor Nellens.
Present.
Councillor Peterson.
Here.
Councillor Shinkin.
Here, if I could ever, everybody rise from over the silence for all your loved ones and we'll follow it by the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Want to welcome everybody here. Thank you for coming. With that, we have a proclamation for the hundred year of the Munster Chamber of Commerce.
My pleasure to read that proclamation. This is the proclamation of the Munster Town Council, a proclamation celebrating one hundred years of the Munster Chamber of Commerce. Whereas the Munster Town Council recognizes the significant contributions and unwavering dedication of the Munster Chamber of Commerce to the growth and prosperity of our town. And whereas the chamber has served as a vital resource for local businesses, fostered connections, promoting economic development and supporting community initiatives for the past century. And whereas the Munster Chamber of Commerce has played a crucial role in shaping the character of our town and enhancing the lives of our residents and whereas the chamber commit commitment to its members and broader community is an inspiration to us all. And now therefore be it resolved that the Munster Town Council formally recognizes the Munster Chamber of Commerce in celebration of its centennial anniversary and here proclaims May fifth, two thousand twenty-five as Munster Chamber of Commerce hundredth anniversary day.
Thank you. I need a motion to adopt the resolution.
I'll make that motion.
Uh, have a motion.
I'll second.
Do we have to do a voice vote or?
We do a will call vote. Let's make it official. Joe, uh, councillor Hopper.
Yes.
Councillor Gardner.
Yes.
Councillor Nellens.
Yes.
Councillor Peterson.
Yes.
Councillor Shinkin.
Yes.
It's five zero.
This proclamation is now passed and adopted by the Munster Town Council, the town of Munster, Lake County, Indiana, on the fifth day of May twenty twenty-five by five votes in favor, zero opposed. And our president George Shinkin will, I will ask, uh, chairman Katie Sanino and Brad Henningway to come forward. As our president George Shinkin presents the proclamation.
Well, thank you very much. Congratulations. With that, we are going to start a public comment. All public comments is limited to two minutes, but the twelve or twenty minutes allotted for public comment section. All speakers must sign in a public speaker sign-in form prior to speaking. Please keep all comments civil, constructive, and related to public policy issues. At their discretion, council may allow public comment to extend past twenty minutes, but not required to do so. All rules for public comment are posted outside the main meeting room. And with that, a public comment. Hi.
Hi, good evening. My name is Emily Angelo and my address is fifteen oh eight Park West Circle. And I have been a Munster resident for forty-three years.
Nice.
And, um, my concern is that you just sort of look at the traffic flow that's going on on forty-fifth where the construction is by the bridge. Um, I know it's a county issue, um, but the bridge has been closed down at times without proper signage and last Friday from three to three thirty, it was shut down with no signage, no rerouting. And cars on their own were angrily turning around, heading then back east to get to flout or back west to get to Southwood, turning north at three thirty as Frank H was getting out of school, affecting walkers, bus lanes. It's coming along.
Um, Bob is not here, but we will bring this to his attention. I know it's close this weekend as well. So let's see what we can do with Public Works. Thank you for bringing us up to our attention.
Yes, my name is Greg Starzovich. I've been here before. Um, it's about speeding through my neighborhood. Camellia. Zalga.
The microphone, I'm sorry, I'm gonna stop the timer real quick. Is the microphone on? I feel like we're struggling. I'm struggling and. I'm even feeling like, can you guys hear me in the van?
He's all wrong.
Can't hear myself, so.
Can you hear me now?
Just talk loud, just talk loud.
Thank you, Greg. I appreciate it.
Speeding on Camellia.
Right, start again if you're, go address.
Ninety-five oh one Cottonwood Drive.
Thank you.
Okay, you know, this has been a problem. You guys did a speed study on it. Camellia. I noticed that you put one new barrier there, a hard rubber. Bump, speed bump. Okay, add that to the one-stop sign. That's making some progress. But unfortunately, what you did was you put that speed bump two and a half houses from the stop sign. So in either direction, you've only slowed the cars down on that quarter mile road for two and a half houses. But I think you need to look at maybe adjusting that. Add another one, that would be fine. Add some stop signs. That always works. Also, for Azalga. You had that long stretch where you could use one of them rubber bumps there. Cause you do have blockways or speed pumps, whatever you call them. So I'm thinking that if you could put another one of those rubber ones there farther down the road on Camellia. You pretty much slung down for that whole road. I don't know how much they cost, whether stop signs are uh, less expensive. But you need to do it. This has been what, almost two years now? Now it's getting warm again. There's gonna be kids playing out there. And something's gonna happen to somebody. And it'd be very unfortunate if it's a kid. So I like to say.
Thank you. And, and we have our chief over here who's also taking note and hopefully.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
I have my allergies a little bummed.
No, we can hear you fine.
Sorry. Okay, um, I wanted to announce that I'm holding a fundraiser for the Munster.
You gotta state your name and address, please. We know who you are, but nobody else does.
Christine Thornton. Ninety-one twenty-eight White Avenue in Munster.
Thank you.
Okay, um, I'm holding a fundraiser for the Munster Three Nine Dogs. I am getting donations from representative community to sell at a yard sale. My house, uh, hopefully May seventeenth, if it doesn't rain, if it rains, it's going to be May one fourth on Saturday. And I just wanted to let everybody know, um, hopefully you can come out and, um, buy something and, or make a donation for the dogs. I've already raised a little bit of money, so I'm kind of excited about it.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I got a ton of stuff for you, so the whole garage is gonna be filled.
Yeah.
Hey there, my name is Burgeon Gladis, Seventeen twenty-seven Chelsea Street. I'm here on behalf of Logan's Love. I'm sure you've heard of us. Um, I can go through if you haven't. Um, we are having one of our major fundraisers coming up, which is our golf outing. And this helps us with our free sensory events and also working with first responders and putting fence glue bags and project lifesaver in the surrounding towns of Lake County. So I just wanted to invite everybody, um, to participate or sponsor, or if you guys need to put up a flyer in your business. So I'll be at the back at the end. I could pass them off.
And we'll put them over there. Could you just explain what Logan's Love is to our audience?
Yeah. Logan's Love was founded in memory of Logan Ruiz, who gradually passed away of result of a tr- um, train accident. He was autistic and stayed behind his backyard, um, to be eloped. That's one of the, um, side effects or symptoms of autism. His mom wanted to take the tragedy and, um, create a foundation to keep his memory alive and give back to the special needs community. So we host two free sensory events, which are sensory Easter egg hunt with accommodations course. And our sensory Santa event where we have eight Santa Puzzles in separate rooms. So you can have like as much time as you give in Santa. It's not waving up a line for two hours and thirty-second photo lot. And then our two fundraisers are our autism walk, which will be, I'll be back for that, um, August, August twenty-fourth. And then our golf outing, just gonna be at bigger park on Friday, June thirteenth.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Laura Stewart and I live at twelve oh nine Fisher Street. Uh, my concern is in regards to the proposed, um, parking lot, uh, at the north end of the football field where they already put in the asphalt turf for the soccer field. Uh, a lot of our subdivision doesn't even have sidewalk, so I have concerns with that. I, because I live on Fisher Street right behind the football field already, I know what the sound is like. And, um, originally with the proposal, they didn't bring up the fact that they wanted the marching band to practice there. I don't think those people know what they're being for. Most of the, I've bought eight houses on Fisher Street, all of them had master budgets and secondary on the west side of the house. All of them that I rebuilt up had to put them on the east side. None of those houses are insulated for that sound, and I just don't think it's fair that it's going in. And I also don't want to see two foot smaller parking spaces for high schoolers to park in. Originally, they said there were maybe be nineteen events, and now it sounds like there's gonna be a lot more. And, uh, I'd just like you to consider our community, our, our neighborhood.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Jurich, eighteen thirty-nine Magnolia. I didn't plan this to talk about traffic. I didn't know there would be other people. However, looking at the agenda today, and I see reference to the speed team. What is the speed team? I have a question. For as many times as I've raised questions about Fran Lynn, about Crestwood, particularly in front of Bluebird Park. Something bad. So just again, again, something bad is gonna happen and we'll get a speed team out there. But I wish we could be more proactive and if you could tell me what a speed team is, I'd like to know.
Do you want to do it, Gerald?
Well, I don't, I mean, the question is, is we meet and we talk about, you know, complaints that come in, and we talk about being proactive in the community as far as placing those speed humps that Mr. Starzovich spoke of, stop signs, things like that, but people have to understand that, you know, it's a management process and we're never gonna cure the, the speeding issue, but we're trying to stay ahead of the, the different topics that come in or different complaints that come in. And that's, I mean, that's basically what goes on. So when we get ideas from our council, you know, public, um, comments, but we have, uh, concerns that come into the department and we, we discuss them and see what the feasible options are.
I agree. I know this.
Within budget.
That is right. It's not gonna be solved here by me. I'm not complaining about it. But I was just, seriously, I had never heard what the speed team was and I really wanted to know. So I appreciate that explanation. Thank you so much.
Is there anybody else for public comment? Going once, going twice. Public comment is closed. We're gonna start with the consent agenda. I made a motion to pass the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to pass the consent agenda.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second that motion.
We got a second. Do we have discussion over this? That being said, Wendy.
I'm sorry, who seconded that?
Chuck.
Chuck, I'm sorry.
And then you can call the roll there.
I will. Councillor Hopper.
Yes.
Councillor Gardner.
Yes.
Councillor Nellens.
Yes.
Councillor Peterson. Councillor Shinkin.
Yes.
Oh. Interesting. Another slide.
Wendy, have a yes.
Councillor, where, that distracted me. So councillor.
Yeah, we had four yeses until Mr. Peterson now.
Peterson, councillor Shinkin, we're all.
Yes.
Everybody agrees.
Make sure you got that.
Everybody said in favor of the consent agenda. Thank you. Oh, and now this, this timer's still going off, so we want to stop it. I'm gonna get rid of it on the screen. There we go. All right, we're back. Wrong menu. We're on, uh, wrong agenda.
I'm gonna wait for you.
Thank you.
There's no confusion. I'm a yes son.
You're a yes. Okay, so Hopper, Gardner, Nellens, Peterson, Shinkin, all five. Yes, it's very good. Five zero. Thank you.
Thanks very much. Are you ready?
I think so.
Okay. We have no old business, new business. We have ordinance nineteen eighty-one additional stop signs.
So this is the result of some, that was stated during the public comment, um, resident complaints, speed team conversation uh, along Harrison. They were recommending that two stop signs be placed. One at Briar Lane, one at Evergreen Lane, and then along Oriole Drive at Southwood and Greenwood. There were, there have been complaints here, there, and they are both near schools. Uh, so we're looking to have authority to install the stop signs. The ordinance is there so that those can be enforced. So it'll be two readings and then after adoption, it would be advertised.
Beautiful. Do we have a motion to accept the first reading of the stop signs?
I'll make that motion.
Work.
Pardon?
Stop signs work.
Um, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
A second.
Who might made the motion? Thank you, councillor Nellens.
Do we have any?
Councillor Hopper, if you were the second, thank you.
Do we have any discussion?
Mr. President, I'll, I'll, I'll jump in and all of this.
Go ahead.
Um, we've had conversations about cost effectiveness of various ways to address speeding. And it's my understanding that the cost of a stop sign is a hundred dollars installed. You contrast that with other, um, street installations such as speed bumps and speed humps, which can cost anywhere from twenty-five hundred dollars up. Um, stop signs seem to be a very economical way to start the process of addressing concerns in the neighborhood about traffic. And, um, I, uh, I think it's a, it's a great way for us to look at things around town. And I heard somebody comment in the audience, and apparently there's others that think that as well.
Who's any other?
Mr. President, I would, uh, really encourage our speed team to start reviewing and, and putting together a matrix for, um, the different areas that we have in town that brings them to schools, parks, uh, speed limit on streets. If the streets are in different types of, uh, uh, traffic patterns. I do know Harrison, uh, is a concern. Harrison is going to be, um, once the train station is opened up, that will be one of those routes that will become, will gather more traffic because of the train station that's at manor. So I think that's a important part, but I think uh, and, and I know last year we talked about different cut-throughs. So I, I do think we need to have matrix put together that we can compare and contrast light streets to, to streets that might not need the traffic calming as much as other streets. I, I would strongly encourage that we, we include our engineering team, S E H, on that. I do think they are working with the school town and also the town council here now.
I think we just got the proposal in for all.
Some of those things, I think that's very positive. And I think if we can standardize some of those processes throughout town, I think that would be also help. Um, I do agree that stop signs are a good first step. But I do think the more that we look at stop signs as our only, um, way of reducing speed, um, in the engineering world, uh, the manual on, on traffic control says that, that stop signs, there's, there's a concern. Once you get more stop signs in town, people will disregard stop signs, people speed in between stop signs. And that makes it harder for the police to enforce that. So I do think there, there comes a, a timeframe in this where we cannot just rely on stop signs as being our only, uh, opportunity to reduce speed and traffic on these streets. Um, I do think the example that we used at Cobblestones a couple of years ago with some temporary traffic, um, either cones and or markings, I think does a real nice job in some neighborhoods because that allows people to see what's coming. It forewarns people that, that traffic control is gonna happen. And when we put the traffic calming devices in, in Cobblestones last year, out of all the traffic calming that was put in, the one place that we did not hear any negative comments, but only positive feedback was from Cobblestone. So I would really encourage our speed team to kind of expand their, their scope of, uh, activities and really become, um, with, with more of a matrix and more of a scientific approach to, to these areas. I think it'll help us and I think it'll help the future requests that they will, will receive.
And I agree. We put one on my street on Margot, a stop sign to go right past that they just regarded. So I mean, it's a good deterrent to start at first, but we need to look at some other alternatives. Anybody else? With that, Wendy, could you please call the vote?
Councillor Hopper.
Yes.
Councillor Gardner.
Yes.
Councillor Nellens.
Yes.
Councillor Peterson.
Yes.
Councillor Shinkin.
Yes.
Five zero.
Next brings up ordinance nineteen eighty-two, uh, Powers Health, E U D.
So this, um, this is to set the D U D and to rezone the existing and proposed mixed medical office and ancillary uses along the Powers Health campus. Uh, the plan commission, it went through that process with them on their docket. They had the required public hearing. Uh, there were no remonstrances related to it. It would change the zoning for the, for the address of eight hundred MacArthur Boulevard, ninety-one oh one Calumet Avenue and nine oh one Franlin Parkway, uh, and change them to, to be zoned as S D V D. Um, this will be a combination of the existing medical campus and parking garage with a proposed conditional four-story eighty-five thousand eight hundred square foot outpatient medical office building. Because it's gone through the appropriate process with the plan commission, uh, this ordinance, uh, it came to council with a unanimous favorable recommendation to approve. If council chooses to do that, it can happen in this reading of the ordinance. You can adopt the ordinance tonight for the point of having two readings.
Thank you. With that being said, do I have a motion to adopt this ordinance?
I'll make that motion to adopt this ordinance for Powers Health. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Gardner with the second.
Come on.
No, no, I, 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 I'm sorry. I didn't mean that. Let's sarcastic. I'm sorry. So I'll second that motion.
Do you have it written? Okay, hold on. Was there any, this, sorry. Is there any discussion? That being said, Wendy, please.
Councillor Hopper.
Yes.
Councillor Gardner.
Yes.
Councillor Nellens.
Yes.
Councillor Peterson.
Yes.
Councillor Shinkin.
Yes. Next is conditional use permit, Marathon Gas.
So this is for the Marathon Gas located at ninety-four fifty-one Calumet Avenue. This went through B Z A. Through their process, they would like to open a car wash, um, in an existing structure that they have. They went through the proper process, proper hearings. There were no remonstrances against this. Um, B Z A voted unanimously for a favorable recommendation to council uh, on the condition that an enhanced buffer on the west side of the property line, uh, be installed.
Okay, with that being said, do we have a motion to approve that car wash?
I'll make a motion to approve the conditional use to allow the reopening of a car wash with the conditional or with the condition of an enhanced buffer on the west side of the property line at ninety-four fifty-one Calumet Avenue. B Z A docket number twenty-four dash zero zero nine.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second that motion. That was Dave.
Uh, do we have any, uh, discussion over this?
This, this is a relatively minor issue, but again, I, I, I certainly support the B Z A in, in allowing this conditional use. Uh, however, I'm always concerned when we pass an ordinance with a condition of, uh, enhanced buffer or, or something that, you know, we, we pass an ordinance with a a provision on a condition of something else, especially if there was time in between the B Z A meeting and this meeting, it'd be nice if they could have completed what the enhanced buffer is gonna look like, or we get some more specifics on that. Again, uh, it's something that has happened in the past. I just I, I would like to have a cleaner look at this if, if at all possible, but certainly I support what the B Z A did here. And, um, I know they had a couple of different meetings with regards to this, this issue of land speaking.
Any other?
Mr. President, I'm gonna weigh in. I, I echo and support what councillor Gardner says. My experience, having been a member of B Z A, it's that these conditions are often offered in the heat of the moment by the applicants. And then when it comes time to actually see the conditions fulfilled, um, we get crickets. This is something that I think is significant in this, for this particular application. Because this is something that's been before the town on a number of occasions. And I, and I know that the B Z A very thoughtfully considered it. And this condition is something that I believe is a compromise that obtains something for the town and then it gives this applicant that's been seeking this for a number of years what they're seeking. So I, I believe it's important that this condition be fulfilled. And if it's not fulfilled, then I, I would urge that this matter be, um, brought back before the council for reconsideration.
Thank you. Anybody else? Hey. With that, Wendy, can you please call the vote?
Councillor Hopper.
Yes.
Councillor Gardner.
Yes.
Councillor Nellens.
Yes.
Councillor Peterson.
Yes.
Councillor Shinkin.
Yes. That brings up purchase of computers.
So earlier this year, council approved, uh, new grant for school town for them to provide us with I T services. Um, and they have been, um, installing a lot of new equipment, doing a lot of rewiring. Um, and we've now reached the point where we're needing to buy new computers. That's what this is about this evening. Uh, if this is approved, it gets all new desktop units for everyone in town hall plus all the uh, all the ancillary devices that go along with that. Um, we're able to get this, um, school town's, uh, agreement that they have with Dell, which is, it's a better price.
Nice.
Uh, we would, we expect that in the next three to six months, we'll be replacing all laptops as well as everything that are in public works.
Okay, with that being said, can I have a motion to purchase these computers?
I'll make that motion to purchase those Dell.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
I will second that motion.
Is there any discussion on this? With that being said, Wendy, can you please call?
Councillor Hopper.
Yes.
Councillor Gardner.
Yes.
Councillor Nellens.
Yes.
Councillor Peterson.
Yes.
Councillor Shinkin.
Yes. Uh, this brings us up for the approval of quote for five Ridge Road.
So five Ridge Road is a property that sits right on State Line and Ridge Road. Uh, in two thousand twenty-two, the council approved a cost sharing agreement with them. Uh, the right of way that sits right along the western edge of their property is used for parking primarily. And it wasn't in that great estate of, of condition. Uh, and so the cost sharing agreement, uh, said that the town would pay for sixty percent to to repave that area and, and, and beautify it. It is one of the first things that people see when they come into town from that direction. Uh, Public Works has secured three quotes to do the work. They have talked with the owner to confirm that, yes, he's on board with paying the cost that it would be, that goes along with that. And so we're looking for approval to award the work to Silvio Giannini. Alongside the.
Could I have a motion to approve the quote for five Ridge Road?
Mr. President, I'd make a motion to, uh, approve Silvio Giannini's cement proposal in the amount of forty-four thousand dollars for five Ridge Road agreement.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
I'll second that motion.
We have a second. Do we have discussion?
I just want to mention that this is really a good action that's being taken because that has been unsightly since the beginning of time. Right there in State Line. As, as you come into Munster, it's, it's never been, uh, very pretty at all.
Except for the lovely mural that's there.
Bureau is very nice.
Funded by the Munster Civic Foundation.
You gotta throw that in.
Yes.
Any other discussion?
Give me a few minutes. I can call it up on the screen.
Maybe you can call the vote.
All right. Councillor Hopper.
Yes.
Councillor Gardner.
Yes.
Councillor Nellens.
Yes.
Councillor Peterson.
Yes.
Councillor Shinkin.
Yes, that brings.
It was a grant from the Indiana Arts Commission that paid for that, so five zero on that.
Five zero. Water main sidewalk restoration.
So over the winter months, uh, there were a number of water main breaks that required sidewalk to be removed. This is, or was damaged during the work. This was uh, Public Works got three quotes to repair all that, all of that sidewalk work. So we're looking for authority to, um, award L two incorporated to do that. This is just sidewalk replacement where there were water main breaks.
Okay. Do we have a motion for the, the sidewalk restoration?
I'll make a motion to approve L two Inc.'s, uh, proposal on the amount of twenty-three thousand two hundred eleven dollars and seventy-one cents for the water department sidewalk repair.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
We have a second. Do we? We have a second, do we have, uh, any, um, discussion? That being said, Wendy, please.
Councilor Hopper.
Yes.
Councilor Gardner.
Yes.
Councilor Nellis.
Yes.
Councilor Peterson.
Yes.
Councilor Shinkin.
Yes, that brings us up to the auction.
Um, so this is the first of two disposal of property items that you're going to be asked to consider. And I, uh, the first is, there is a K nine car, the two thousand eleven Ford Crown Victoria. That was given to us by the Village of Lansing, and it has given us its useful life, and it's time to, uh, decommission it. Um, the equipment that was on it that still was, that the Village of Lansing had asked to have back when we were done, has, that has been removed. Uh, police department is asking to have this declared surplus and to be allowed to dispose of it by having a silent auction.
Do I have?
I'll make a motion, I'll make that motion.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Do we have discussion? That being said.
Councilor Hopper.
Yes.
Councilor Gardner.
Yes.
Councilor Nellis.
Yes.
Councilor Peterson.
Yes.
Councilor Shinkin.
Yes, and then last, or new business, disposal of property.
Uh, this is, uh, there are some small pieces of office equipment that are no longer usable. That we need declared surplus, and then there is also, um, quite the number of hard drives, memory sticks. That type of thing that we're asking to be declared surplus, um, and to dispose of. All of the I T related equipment, the school town will take, and they will destroy it in such a way that it cannot be used again that. So that people can't get whatever data might still be on those devices.
Thank you, do we have a motion to dispose of this property?
I'll make that motion.
Do we have a second? I'll second, do we have discussion?
Mr. President, um, this is, give me a second, what's the destructive process?
They will basically take each hard drive and each of these memory devices, and they put it in a drill press. And they will put, I don't know how many holes in it, um, it's apparently a wonderful way to. Get rid of some anger as well, so they are, they're looking forward to being able to do this.
Sell tickets and.
That's a different motion.
Well, they drill holes, and it certainly won't be usable after that.
Exactly.
Very good.
And with that being said, can we take the vote?
Sure, Councilor Hopper.
Yes.
Councilor Gardner.
Yes.
Councilor Nellis.
Yes.
Councilor Peterson.
Yes.
Councilor Shinkin.
Yes, that brings us up to reports, does anybody have a report up here?
Uh, my report's more of an announcement, uh, tomorrow afternoon at five P M, the Monster, uh, Park Board will be meeting in a work study. Uh, to review some and discuss the, the future of the Centennial Park. Not the future of it, but the map, the upcoming project to replace this, um, old Centennial Park clubhouse. Uh, the other item is that, um, we did meet with the sustainability group. Um, each of the councils, you should have a report, uh, from that meeting, I certainly welcome your comments, your suggestions. Uh, and we will be presenting that also to the Chamber of Commerce and also the school board as in a draft form at this time.
Any other reports? Any portfolio reports? Announcements, all town council meetings will begin at six thirty unless otherwise noted, our next town council meeting will be May nineteenth. At twenty twenty-five, um, may I have a motion to adjourn?
Don't move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Now we're gonna go over to redevelopment meeting, this thing will take about five minutes.
Five minutes. Okay, you, Councilor Peterson.
Yes, it was.
The motion to adjourn, okay.
Okay, I wanna welcome everybody to the, uh, redevelopment commission regular meeting of the Monster Town Hall. Monday, May fifth, at seven P M, Wendy, could you, uh?
Sure, Commissioner Hopper.
Here.
Commissioner Gardner.
Here.
Commissioner Nellis.
Here.
Commissioner Peterson.
Here.
Commissioner Shinkin.
Here.
Uh, the school board liaison, Mr. John Castro.
Here.
Nice to see you this evening.
Nice to you all. That brings us up to public comments for redevelopment commission only, all public comment is limited to two minutes, but the total of twenty minutes allotted for public comment section. All speakers must sign the public speaker's sign-in form prior to speaking. Please keep all comments civil, constructive, and related to public policy issues. At their discretion, council may allow public comment to extend past twenty minutes, but not required to do so. All rules for public comment are posted outside the main meeting room, and with that, I'm opening up public comment, redevelopment only. Going once, going twice, I'm closing up public comment, set the agenda, I need a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second that motion, we have a second, do we have any discussion?
That being said, Wendy, please call the vote.
Commissioner Hopper.
Yes.
Commissioner Gardner.
Yes.
Commissioners Nellis.
Yes.
Commissioner Peterson.
Yes.
Commissioner Shaken.
Yes, we have no old business, we have no new business. Any reports? Any announcements? May I have a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Second that motion.
All those say aye.
Aye.
Hello, thank you, everyone.
John, it's always a pleasure.
Always, thank you.